Off a day and good afternoon. We're back from recess and we're still on second reading. We are now on Bill 8-37COR. Senator Jesse Lujan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill 8-37COR as amended by the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning on the third reading file, and I would like to speak on it.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My dear colleagues, I rise and ask each and every one of you to please vote for the passage of this bill. It's self-explanatory. I'll give you a brief summary on it. I believe that this, and I believe and I hope that this bill receives the unanimous support. This legislation simply ensures that all RFPs and IFBs are posted and announced online at one central website at the same time that they are published in local newspapers and on the individual government of Guam agency websites. This bill is one step towards a more efficient and transparent government of Guam. Currently, individuals and businesses looking to serve the government of Guam need to search the individual pages of the local newspapers and must thoroughly examine each individual government of Guam agency website to find available RFPs or IFBs. And as it stands today, too many RFPs and IFBs are not given the full light of day. This bill will ensure the government of Guam receives the most competitive proposals from the many qualified vendors available and not just settle on the most politically connected. The transparency through this legislation will provide quality for all prospective vendors and a chance to bid on government business and services. It is imperative that the government of Guam continues to improve the online accessibility of the daily business of the government, and this bill certainly helps accomplish that. This bill costs so little to implement and brings so many benefits. So I ask to please vote affirmatively on Bill 8-32COR to help improve the online transparency of the government of Guam. And again, a vote for Bill 8-37COR is a vote for a better, more efficient, more transparent government, and I thank you in advance for your support and efforts to improve our government of Guam and how it operates. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sajidz Masi, Senator Lujan. On the bill, is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the bill? Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I certainly rise in support of this bill, number 8-37. I have to commend my colleague, Senator Lujan. This particular bill has been a long time in coming, and I'm happy that it's finally here. I mean, you've often heard over the years how, you know, you have to be part of the in crowd in order to get the business. And I think we are very much of the position that anyone and everyone who has the ability should have the ability to bid on contracts. And in order to do that, they need to be aware that it's even available so that they all, all the businesses that may have an interest have an equal opportunity to be able to bid on the contracts for whatever services the government may need or products the government may need. Hopefully, we will get a better deal as a result of it and certainly consolidating this information so it's readily accessible. It's not that difficult to do that. It's actually surprising that this has not happened in the past because it just seems to be the standard of how government should be, that everyone has an equal opportunity. Not only those that are in the inside, but those on the outside should have an equal opportunity to bid on these projects. You hear too often of certain companies, you know, that the deals are already cut before the announcements are even made, and I don't think that's how the government should run, especially you're dealing with public funds. And it shouldn't be all about the political process of who's in, you know, it's like the essentially getting whoever wins the election, you know, wins the war, and they get to go and get and do whatever they choose to do for the period of time that they're in and use and abuse public resource. That really should not be how our government runs. These type of things that the government needs in terms of goods or services should be standardized no matter what administration's in or what administration's out to ensure that public funds are properly spent and it goes through proper review process, proper public awareness so that, like I mentioned, every opportunity is there for anyone who's interested to be able to bid on these contracts. So I certainly support it, and I hope my colleague would not mind if I'd be second co-sponsor on his bill because I'm very supportive of the agenda here and what he's trying to move forward. So, Madam Speaker, there's no objection. I certainly rise in support of this and would like to be the second co-sponsor on Bill number eight. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Taidegui, you are recognized.
Sajidz Masi, Madam Speaker, and I stand in full support of this legislation. And, you know, there was a comment, though, on a testimony that was provided from, I believe it was DOA, and they mentioned that to not have it, if this bill goes through and it's posted on the website, that it not be published as well. And I just want to make sure that that is not going to happen because it's so important that the people of Guam, you know, even though some don't have Internet access, that the recommendation from DOA is not in this piece of legislation.
With the sponsor yield, does that question?
Yes, I'll yield the question. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Senator Taidegui. No, Senator Taidegui, nothing changes in regards to the announcements and newspaper publications and all that. All that does is that same day that they're published in the newspaper and on the specific agency that has the RFP or IFB out, it also will be in the central website so everybody will have the access to that as well. So nothing changes. This is just a central location, easily accessible. All of government's RFPs and IFBs will be there as well, and then they can also superlink to the particular agency to get the full scope of the work that needs to be done. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Lujan. Senator Taidegui, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to the author, the good author from Timuning, to ensure that the people of Guam have every opportunity, whether it's online or in the paper, to avail themselves of the information that's needed. You know, Madam Speaker, in the 36 Guam legislature, our good senator from Chalampago, Senator Brown, had pushed very hard, you know, to ensure that transparency is out there and for the public, most especially. It's not just for us here in the legislature, but for the public to know what's going on in this body. And I think that this is another step toward more transparency, and I humbly ask that the author of the legislation include me into this, into his bill as a co-sponsor, second co-sponsor. And thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, is there anyone else who'd like to? Senator Sinagastin, you're recognized on the bill.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just a simple question for the author. I noticed that you didn't include the judicial. You know, the way I was reading it, it pretty much covers everybody, but I think it should be added that every agency, no matter what, you put into one, only because I didn't see the courts on it.
No, no. I mean, yeah.
Just a minute, Senator Lujan. Would you like him to yield to that question?
Oh, yes, yes, Madam Speaker.
Okay, Senator Lujan, would you yield to the question?
Absolutely. We can amend it and add on the judicial branch of government. Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so you do the amendment. I just want to make sure it covers it all because I'm in support of this, that it would be great. It's all one website, we can all look at it, and we will know exactly what's going on, especially after the oversight of DOE. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
I have a minute recess to make the amendment.
Senator Sinagastin concluded his remarks. Senator Barnett, you are recognized.
I also had a point of inquiry for the good author of the good measure.
State your point of inquiry.
Thank you. Well, I'm just looking at the GovGuam portal website, and I noticed that the government of Guam is already posting all the procurement notices. So I've just, my question would be, is this effort to strengthen the public notice of it?
Yes. Yes, it does.
With the sponsor yield?
Yes, absolutely. I'll yield to that. Yes, absolutely it does. As a matter of fact, we met with the Office of Technology, and this strengthens what they're doing, what they're currently doing at this point.
And so you're, again, could I just, am I allowed to just talk to him?
No.
Okay, sorry. Don't talk to me. No, but so this would be a dedicated website so that if you're looking for procurement, if you were looking for procurement notices today, there's a whole lot of scrolling that happens. And so is he talking about a separate, dedicated website or just if the good author could explain how it's different from what we already have?
Senator Lujan, would you yield to that question?
I'll yield to the question, yes, absolutely. It's a dedicated website for all GovGuam agencies. I'm glad Senator Sinagastin had mentioned the judiciary, and we'll add that on as well, that all IFBs or RFPs that go out for bid, that is one central website that is all posted. But it's alongside the particular agencies that have the RFPs and IFBs. Now, depending on how intricate the scope of work may be, that may be in the particular website on that particular agency, but you'll have a superlink from the main website to that. So it doesn't eliminate what's happening in their own websites. This is just a central location where you see, when you want to see what's out for RFPs or IFBs in GovGuam, you go to that page, and then you can click and superlink over to that particular website for more information regarding that with dates and contact persons and numbers and things of that nature.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Barnett. On the bill, Senator Perez, did you, have you had, Senator Sinagastin?
Just a little bit of point of information. I was speaking with the legal. If you look earlier on the page, it's specific to the agencies, but on the second page, I can tell you exactly, on the section 522, it said the word "all," but "all" can only refer to the paragraph above which identify agencies where, after I spoke with legal, the "all" has to be in the beginning so that it flows. "All" is consistent, "all" is "all." And that, and maybe when you work with your amendment, she'll be ready to do it. Thank you.
Thank you for that point of information. On the bill, Senator Duennas, you are recognized.
Sajidz Masi, Madam Speaker, and I certainly rise in full support of Bill 8-37. And just a quick observation in reading once again, the intent, it clearly states in the first paragraph that there is no existence of one central dedicated website for the purpose of posting these procurements. So that is exactly what's intended here, is to ensure that you don't have to bounce around and go to public works and see what they're doing. You don't have to go to EPA, for example, and find out what they're trying to procure for. You can go to one central location and find out all the procurements, IFBs, any offerings in terms of being able to offer services to the government of Guam. So I certainly think that this is very appropriate, and I think that this is something that will provide not only transparency but just simply accessibility. It just seems to make sense. Of course, as the author said, it doesn't preclude those who are announcing on their websites and how they've been doing it traditionally, but you've got one central portal now, and I just think that really, really makes sense, should be ease and convenient. And from what I understand, it will also lock in with GSA and all the other procurement that's being done in the government of Guam. So I want to commend the author, and I want to stand in line as a co-sponsor. So thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I just think this is one extra move that we can do to really, you know, be a lot more clear, a lot more innovative, a lot more accessible and transparent. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Duennas. On the bill, Senator Perez, you're recognized on the bill.
Sajidz Masi, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this bill. I think it's like the retiring speaker said, it expands current procurement law to require that all RFPs and IFBs are hosted through OTAC and to include all executive branch agencies and autonomous agencies. So this does apply to those agencies, just to be clear. And so what's important is that there's a centralized location where any vendor who's interested in doing business with the government can seek what is, any notices at an easy location. The important point is that it would not be duplicating what the government agencies have on their website, so it actually accentuated because they're not going to be posting all the documents, which would be too burdensome for one centralized website to have, but it would have the hyperlink to the purchasing agency's website. So I think that is really a good change. The other thing, it's, it is consistent with what's in procurement law, so all the records have to be there as stated in law. So all procurement records must be retained pursuant to what's currently in statute. So I think that's really important, that it's more of a, it accentuates and doesn't substitute what currently is in law. There is an effective date of 120 days to allow for these agencies that don't normally utilize this website to work with OTAC in order to get their RFPs and IFBs up. So I thank the good author for this measure, and I hope to be a co-sponsor as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Perez. On the bill, sorry, Senator Sinicalis, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I support the bill, and I ask my colleague to add me as a co-sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Barnett, you are recognized on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I too rise in full support of the bill. I just had a question about how it was different from what's on the GovGuam, the legendary GovGuam notices portal website. And I do support the measure because I think transparency has to be a lot more than a document dump on a government website. Yeah, because that's kind of our definition of transparency, and it's celebrated when we just start posting a bunch of stuff online and we leave it to the people of Guam to scroll for hours and hours and hours trying to find that needle in a haystack. So, yeah, I support this. I think that we should break up other pieces of information that may be buried in other websites across the government of Guam. And I think this Senator Lujan is right on with this measure because it does make it easier for the people to go to one centralized website and look at everything procurement. I was struggling with looking at a website this morning, the Department of Administration website. It's a really good website, by the way, but there's just so much information on there. It's really hard to narrow down what you're looking for. But I was looking for pay raises, and there's just a bunch of different tabs on there. You can go there, you could check unclaimed checks, right, if you'd had an EIP stimulus or whatever. But I had a constituent call the office this morning, and they were upset with, I'm just going to speak frankly, they're upset with the administration because it's a GDOE employee. They haven't got their 22% pay raise because, as we all know, the governor is supposed to come out with a report based on the good amendment from the good senator to my right over here, and that hasn't been done yet. So this constituent had told me that he was upset because they haven't got their 22% pay raise, but that Atalupa staffers and some cabinet members had received very sizable pay raises of $10,000. And, you know, being the old media hound that I am, I decided to hop on this website. And this, you know, this is really an example of how really streamlining and breaking out information into separate standalone websites really benefits true transparency, right? And so anyway, I started looking on these documents, the personnel actions on there on the DOA website, and I was shocked to find that at the turnover of the term, the unclassified staffers at Atalupa, but not all of them, it was really weird. I don't know if they used like a point system or to determine who got a $10,000 raise because not all of them got it, but certainly some of the more senior political hires did. And I was shocked. I was shocked to see, you know, for example, not to call anyone out, but the chief of staff of Atalupa, separated from GovGuam on New Year's Eve and was hired back on New Year's Day with a $15,000 pay increase. And so that, breaking out the information into separate websites, I think really helps some transparency, especially if you're looking for something specific. You know, you shouldn't have to spend hours upon hours navigating a website, and that's why I fully support this bill with Senator Lujan because it takes, you know, what basically is a gargantuan amount of information with procurement. I mean, we're talking about a lot of documents, right? And kind of separates it away into another website. And I'm not sure if it's germane or not, but maybe when we get to it, if I can cook up an amendment that would require something similar for, you know, any raises above a certain dollar amount, because I definitely think that the people of Guam have a right to know, and they shouldn't have to get caught just scrolling through these websites trying to find these documents if the administration is unwilling to come forward and offer the information on its own. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, is there anyone else on the bill? If not, then the sponsor may close on the bill. Senator Lujan?
Yeah, Madam Speaker. Can I, so a short amendment so I can, recess so I can get the amendment passed?
All right, we'll take a two-minute recess. We're back from recess. Senator Lujan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, thank you. The amendment has been passed out, adding again on section 5221 where it says, including the Guam Visitors Bureau and the addition, the judiciary of Guam. Colleagues get the amendment? Okay. Also, Madam Speaker.
I'm sorry, just a sec.
Oh, that was the change, ma'am.
Please proceed. Did you want to discuss it anymore?
No.
Okay, so on that amendment, would anyone like to speak? Is there any objection to the, or sorry, would you like to close on the amendment?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, before I close, too, I'd like to add.
Sorry. On the amendment, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, amendment passes. We're back on the bill. Senator Lujan, you are closing on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I make a motion to add, let me see in the order that they came in, Senators Brown, Taidegui, Duennas, Sinicalis, wait, no, yes, Sinagastin, I'm sorry, Perez, Sinicalis, Barnett, who else am I saying? Yeah, I already added you. Fisher, Bloss, Amanda, everybody that's here, everybody that's present here, Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker as well. I'd like to close as well. I'd like to close on my bill as well, Madam Speaker. Very short.
All right. On the motion to add the sponsors in the order that he dictated, plus everyone else after that, any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, my colleagues. The passage of Bill 8-37COR clearly demonstrates that the Guam legislature is committed to a more efficient and transparent government of Guam, ensuring there is one easily accessible local website that announces all the government of Guam's RFPs and IFBs. In a timely manner is long overdue. Today, we take a great step towards changing and making an important part of government Guam bidding more competitive, more accessible online. This bill is a practical and tangible way to improve the government's services. We live in a digital world, and when the government of Guam seeks vendors and expertise And when the government of Guam seeks vendors and expertise, it should be fair, accessible, and online. And Bill 8-37COR makes that happen. I want to thank my colleagues again for making that happen this afternoon. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I also move to place Bill 8-37COR on the third reading voting file.
On the motion to place the bill on the third reading file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
We're now on Bill number 17-37COR. Senator Taitegui, you are recognized.
Si, Jesus, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to make a motion to append the testimony from the Guam Economic Development Authority. And this is another testimony they provided from the first one that they had provided. It's dated April 10, 2023. I'd like to make a motion to append this to the committee report.
On the motion to append the testimony to the committee report, is there any objection?
It should be on the, okay.
There's a request for a hard copy. Is the report, I mean, is the letter, the testimony on the drive? The session drive? Senator?
I am not sure at this time. I'd like to speak to my oversight chair for.
Clerks, is that testimony been added to the session drive? No, it hasn't been. So we'll take a one-minute recess to add that up and to get hard copies. We're back from recess. Senator Taitegui, you're recognized on Bill 17-37.
Si, Jesus, Madam Speaker. And good morning, Madam Speaker, I mean, good afternoon, Madam Speaker, and to my colleagues. I move to place Bill 17-37COR as an act to add a new subsection 77103 to Article 1 of Chapter 77, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, relative to ensuring fiscal responsibility by limiting the total authorized amount of tax credits each year to the amount set aside by Ilasla Turanguahan as the general fund reserve or the deficit reduction slash rainy day fund introduced by myself, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Sabina Paris, Senator Roy Canata, and Senator Jesse Luhon. And I'd like to place it onto the third reading file and provide briefer remarks. Please proceed. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Our tax credit program is one of the most valuable economic development tools we have to encourage investment and business growth on Guam. These tax credits incentivizes, incentive it, wait. These tax credits incentives allow us to show investors that, yes, we welcome your business and we will do what we can to support your venture within our community. The tax credit program is a privilege, an opportunity for investors and business owners to create more jobs for our people, to expand and improve their operations, make the capital investments needed to take their ideas and their potential and the potential for growth to the next level and add to the diversity of our local businesses. This program has also supported the development of sports facilities for our young athletes and the improvements of existing facilities in our villages. But as with any program offering opportunities to offset tax payments, there are ways to toughen up the statute to make sure our government, our people, are getting the best bang for their buck. Madam Speaker, Bill 17-37 is meant to strengthen the tax credit program with the best interest of the people of Guam in mind. Bill 17-37 would limit the amount of tax credit to drawn down each year to only the amount of cash this body has set aside for the government of Guam rainy day fund. Now, based on my meeting with GIDEA, we know that no more than about $3 to $5 million has been drawn down in a year at its highest, which does not come close to the $15 million we set aside for the rainy day fund. But it would give us, it would give us comfort knowing that in the event our projected revenues are short, that the funding is there to carry out other appropriations. Bill 17-37, Madam Speaker, is a move toward fiscal responsibility, a stopgap measure that ensures we are not spending more money than we are anticipated to receive. Yes, we appreciate business investments in Guam and our, and our economy, but our people must come first. This bill makes sure we don't start offsetting private businesses' expenses with money we aren't prepared to cover on our end. Considering the state of our public schools, I think we can all agree that every dollar counts. We already have a track record of being unprepared or not looking ahead. Let's make sure that doesn't happen by passing Bill 17-37. Madam Speaker, colleagues, this is a simple measure with a critical effect. Bill 17-37 ensures that we act responsibly with our business incentive programs. Madam Speaker, Bill 17-37 was amended in committee. The changes, the change was simple underlining and space corrections and nothing more for my colleagues. I welcome debate on these measures, on this measure, and will try to answer your questions to the best of my ability. Si, Jesus, Madam Speaker. And at this time, Madam Speaker, I would, since everybody has a copy of the testimony from GIDEA, the second testimony from GIDEA, which, to my colleagues, the only change in that is from that GIDEA fully supports both Bill 17 and 18, which is a bill that's coming up next. And that's really the only difference compared to the first testimony they provided with the intent. I had the opportunity to sit with them twice, actually, after the public hearing, to ensure that everything that is placed in here meets their support. And as you can see, we have that. So I'd like to make a motion to append to the committee report this testimony from GIDEA on April 10, 2023.
On the motion to append the testimony of GIDEA to the committee report, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. Thank you, Madam Speaker. On the bill, is there anyone who'd like to be recognized on the bill? Senator Fisher, you are recognized.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just rise for a point of inquiry.
Please state your point of inquiry.
Yes, is, I appreciate, I appreciate the intent of the bill. My question is this, does it affect qualifying certificates? Qualifying certificates, I know, are defined as rebates and abatement. But does, can this bill be read to put a ceiling on the amount of credits, rebatements, rebates that are anticipated under the tax, the qualifying certificate program?
On that question with the sponsor, you?
Yes, Madam Speaker, thank you. And thank you to my colleague for that question. I believe this question was brought up when we were debating in the public hearing on Bill 18. And the concern that my good colleague from Talafoco had, we made that amendment in Bill 18 to ensure that this is just focused, which was on, it's another bill, actually. But to his question, short answer is no. It does not affect them at all. But we did make a concession in Bill 18 based on the good senator's concern about QC's, which was addressed in Bill 18. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Fisher, you have the floor.
Yes, I'd thank, I'd thank Senator Taitegui for the response, and I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Fisher. On the bill, is there anyone who'd like to be recognized? On the bill? If not, then the sponsor, Senator Brown? On the bill? If not, then the sponsor may close on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to my colleagues. And this is a sensible measure that can be implemented with, with this session. So I greatly appreciate the debate we had during the public hearing. A lot of great questions were brought up. So more importantly, Madam Speaker, Bill 17-37 ensures that we've protected ourselves should our revenue projections miss the mark. And I humbly ask my fellow colleagues to support the passage of Bill 17-37. And let's secure a level of fiscal responsibility by ensuring we don't allow recipients to collectively draw down more tax credits than we can afford. So with that, I ask that Bill 17-37 be sent to the third reading file. Si, Jesus, Madam Speaker.
Si, Jesus, Madam Speaker. On the motion to place Bill number 17-37COR onto the third reading file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on Bill number 18-37COR. And Senator Taitegui, you are recognized.
Si, Jesus, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill 18-37COR, an act to add a new subsection 77103 to Article 1 of Chapter 77, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, relative to providing for the responsible management of public finances by implementing a 10-year sunset provision for all tax credit programs introduced by myself, Senator, and Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Sabina Paris, Senator Roy Canata, and Senator Jesse Luhon. Into the third reading file, Madam Speaker, and provide briefer remarks. Please proceed. Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, for as responsible as the sunset provision is, I'm not quite sure how this is not already part of the law or part of the rules that govern tax credit programs. After meeting with officials from Guam Economic Development Authority, I was informed that there are a number of tax credit program recipients who have yet to call in their tax credits at all. More concerning is the fact that there are a few of these recipients who have yet to even break ground on their projects. This is why Bill 18-37 will place a 10-year sunset provision on the use of tax credits so that recipients of these opportunities utilize them in a timely manner. An organized, timely manner at that. Otherwise, give up the opportunity and allow us to offer the tax credit incentive to the next serious business adventure. I urge you all to consider the benefits of a 10-year sunset provision for tax credit program recipients as part of a broader strategy to strengthen economic development in Guam. I know setbacks happen. We all know, we've been through COVID. But there must be established rules to the tax credit program. We've got to ensure the program's effectiveness moving forward, especially if we want to show our off-island investors or those with significant investment plans that this is a serious, competitive program they want to be a part of. Madam Speaker, my colleagues, we welcome every investment into Guam and our people. And Bill 18-37 ensures that we are clear with the timelines of our tax credit programs. I would like to mention, though, the newer tax credits that have been passed by this body has language that sunsets the programs. Unfortunately, those tax credit programs since 2001, all the way up to 2018, did not. Also, Madam Speaker, there was an amendment made to this legislation. And the amendment was, was based on a comment that Senator Fisher, or my good colleague from Talafoco, had mentioned during the public hearing, which we thought we wanted to make sure that that concern was addressed. And I met with GIDEA to ensure that it will cover any concerns that a good senator from Talafoco may have. And you'll find that on page 2, line 26, after credit program, it says pursuant to this chapter. And this chapter speaks of tax credit programs, not of QC's or anything else. So we wanted to make sure that that was placed into it. That being said, Madam Speaker, I welcome debate on this measure and will try my best to answer any questions to the best of my ability. Si, Jesus.
Si, Jesus, Senator Taitegui, on the bill. Is there anyone who'd like to be recognized on the bill? Senator Luhon, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I just want a point of inquiry with the, with the author, if I can, please.
Please state your question, please.
Thank you. No, I just wanted to find out if any of the, the companies that were offered tax credits at maybe, they were getting ready to break ground, but then the H2 situation or COVID had hit and may have asked for an extension? Or, you know, if any of these unnatural conditions had happened for, for them to, to not be able to exercise the tax credit that they, that they already received?
With the sponsor yield to that question.
Si, Jesus, Madam Speaker. Actually, Madam Speaker, most of these tax credits that already have a sunset provision in them are around 2018. So it really did not affect them. And then the prior bill to this, we, okay. So this particular bill has a 10-year sunset provision. However, in 2018 on up, every tax credit program that came to this body had its own sunset provision and allowed for funding to be, if, if it's like $2 million and the first year they have $1 million, the second year they have $500,000, the third year they have $500,000. If they don't avail themselves on the first year, they are allowed to have in the second year, avail themselves not only of just $500,000, but also 1.5, I mean, $1.5 million. If they don't, in, let's say they don't utilize that in three years, then the $1 million for the first year, the $500 in the second year, and the third year for the $500,000 will now avail them the ability to go for $2 million. But many of these allow them to continue on until it's been, it's been completed. And there is any time that any of these particular tax credits for these programs are coming up for an ending date, it allows the legislature to extend that program in the event it should come up. But we did look at many of these programs, especially those from 1998 to 2004 that did not have the sunset provisions. And then from 2004 to current, which do most of them have the sunset provisions in the, in the legislature? in the legislation that created the tax program. So, that being said, Madam Speaker, nothing stops this body or any one of the senators from continuing on with the program through legislation to renew or to extend. I'm sorry, not renew, but to extend.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I stand in full support of the measure. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Luhon. On the bill? On the bill? Senator Shelton?
On the bill? Speaker Chalaki, you are recognized.
Thank you very much. I stand in support of the bill. I just wanted to get some clarifications as to the tax credits that might be impacted by this bill to cap these programs at 10 years or to sunset them. Some of these, as the findings say, have been outstanding for many years. And there's some that are listed. She says, "The findings say that according to GIDA, 14 tax credit programs were authorized since 1998, totaling $29 million. And of that, $17.7 million has been dispersed, leaving a balance of $11 million, which may still be accessible." And then they go into credit, I mean, sorry, into detail as to which ones can be extended into future years. And I just kind of wanted to follow up on a couple of these. So according to this, the tax credit program for the soccer stadium facilities has a balance of $200,000. Can the sponsor confirm the total amount of tax credits that were given in this 2004 tax credit program for the soccer stadium? My understanding is a million, but I'd like to confirm that if the sponsor will yield.
Thank you. Does the sponsor yield to the question?
Absolutely, Madam Speaker. It was Public Law 27-85, which was first implemented on the soccer facilities in the north and southern sports complex. And then there was Public Law 31-233, which was passed on September 17, 2012. Now, this authorized, the soccer facilities authorized $1.2 million. And they have currently a balance of $208,008. According to GIDA, they have spoken to those who are availing themselves of this tax credit, and GIDA has brought to my attention that they said, quote, "We do not anticipate any tax credit requests."
Does that satisfy the question?
Yes, very much. And Sijus Massey to the sponsor. So the soccer stadiums had requested for $1.2 million or have been authorized for $1.2 million in tax credits and have utilized about $800,000 or, well, they have a $200,000 balance left, which they are willing to forego. There's another one listed here, and that is the Raceway Park. 1997, it says, I mean, sorry, 1998, that they have a balance of $605,000, according to the findings. $605,000 in tax credits authorized since 1998. I'd like to ask what, if the sponsor can yield to, how much was the total tax credits given to the Raceway Park?
Does the sponsor yield to the question?
Absolutely, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the Guam Raceway Federation or Guam Raceway Park was Public Law 24-1441, which was on February 22, 1998. The authorized amount was for $6 million. The balance, as mentioned, is $605,348.2. The last tax credit issued was in 2015 for the Raceway Federation or the Raceway Park. Again, it was in 2015 was the last time they availed themselves. And it's not, and they have actually been noncompliant since 2015. And they do not anticipate, according to GIDA, any further requests for tax credits.
What do, what do you mean by noncompliant? May I ask the sponsor to yield to that? And would you could repeat the total amount that they were authorized again?
May I, okay, thank you. The authorization, again, was for $6 million. The balance that's left over is $605,348.82. The last time they availed themselves of tax credits was in 2015. Noncompliant was the same question that I asked as well. And they said that there are certain regulations and requirements and permits that are required from the Guam Raceway Park, and they have not met those requirements, whether it's to the Chamor Land Trust or to GIDA themselves. That's what they explained to me.
Thank you very much for yielding. Yeah, I'm looking at the law itself that authorized those tax credits, Public Law 24-141. And in the law, it says that they could have reached up to $9 million. So GIDA granted them $6 million, and they still have a balance, and they're noncompliant, a balance of less than a million. So they've used probably $5 million. The reason I'm asking about this is because I was at the soccer stadium the other day for the qualifiers match between Guam and the Philippines. And I was very impressed by their facilities and that they had, in their interactions with the government, they've been compliant, and they've left the balance of $200 million out of a $1.2 million tax credit is what they asked for. That's it. Versus a $6 million tax credit. And I get questions a lot. Why can't we, the Raceway, get the same deal that the soccer, the soccer people had? Why can't we get that deal? Well, the Raceway was granted $5 million more, maybe even $8 million more than the soccer people. And they have utilized the bulk of that, and this has been outstanding since 1998. So I just wanted to confirm those facts because, yeah, I could find the amount that it was authorized, but not the amounts that GIDA is using. So that's why those questions were perplexing to me because they had actually, in fact, been granted a lot more in tax credits, the Raceway Park, and the soccer stadium had been granted a lot less. And compliance issues are also very different. So I'm just pointing that out because I wasn't sure what they were referring to when they were asking me, can we get the same deal? Why can't we get the deal that is given to these soccer stadiums? And I really think it's obvious that the deal given to the Raceway Park was much better, and soccer stadiums did not remove minerals from their property and cash them in for millions of dollars either. So I want to thank the author for this bill. I think it's a great bill. We put a sunset on these outstanding tax credits. We're able to kind of regroup and reconfirm how much money we have to set aside or make sure we don't count on in tax revenues because of the programs that are outstanding. And I think tax credits have been used in a very good way in the past and recently. And they're very useful if the parties remain in compliance. We've been able to build, you know, the roads, I think, in Harmon because of tax credits. We've been able to facilitate construction of the National Tennis Federation Facilities, the Guam National Youth Football Federation, the Raceway Park in large part because of tax credits of the government of Guam. And we still have some outstanding, and, you know, maybe they will be used to do programs such as put equipment into the hospital. I think that was your bill. And so still beneficial uses, especially at a time when the government was low on cash. And now that we are in cash, hopefully that these credits will be used less but for big investments. And I can see them as a benefit to attracting business and also to, yeah, bringing in things that the government was not going to pay for with cash itself. So I just want to thank the author of the bill. I would, I think it's a great bill. Sijus Massey, for your work.
Thank you. Speaker Chalaki, on the bill. Senator Barnett.
Thank you, thank you, Madam. I stand in support. I think it's a great bill, too. But just to kind of expand on what the previous speaker had said and maybe direct this towards the author of this fine measure. But is there a way we police how these tax credits are used? Because I was just very bothered to find out that the good folks at the Raceway got $8 million in tax credits when I know that some very good friends of mine who support the youth motocross had used the Raceway Park for a weekend event, and they were charged thousands and thousands of dollars. So I'm just trying to reconcile that in my head, how the government of Guam could be giving out, you know, $8 million in tax credits, and then the people who are given these benefits who are turning around and charging thousands of dollars to kids, basically, who want a motocross for the weekend. Thank you. So is there a mechanism there, Senator, to kind of, if you don't mind? Is there some kind of mechanism to police these credits and what they're used for?
Absolutely, especially if this measure should pass to the good senator because then we can't, you know, reach a certain amount that we have not put away in the rainy day fund to be able to ensure that we are able to cover these tax credits. But GIDA provides a spreadsheet, and they're very good about providing any of the good senators here with a copy of what is current in this. And once this bill passes, there's going to be a lot of these other tax credit programs where they, one, never even availed themselves with, come off the books. And that was the whole premise of this legislation, is to clean up the books, you know, start fresh. Because there are other bills, other tax credit programs that have a sunset provision that can give you more of an assessment of how much is being spent every year on tax credits. So yes, GIDA does keep track of that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. On the bill? Senator Sinagastian, you may.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I was just looking at the GIDA's report, and it's amazing how a lot of us question it. Look at the GIDA report. The racetrack was since '98. It wasn't just yesterday. It wasn't like 10 years ago. It's a lot more than that. And if you look at everybody else's, what kind of bothers me a little bit is that when you look at the GIDA report, it always says they didn't use it yet, but maybe they'll use it next month, next year. That's got to stop, and I thank the author for the bill because now we're going to be able to say it's going to sunset. It's going to close down. You don't get to drag this on. I think one of the major or best tax credit we got was the Harmel Loop, the Harmel Loop Industrial. Because when they did the work, they came back to us and said, hey, can we use the million dollars that we didn't need to spend? That they got a tax credit? And we said, yes. And if you go to Harmel Industrial Park, it's, gosh, the road is great down there, all over. The road's been great. And I'd just like to say, I'd like to thank the author for this bill and that we all be mindful of any tax credit we want to put on, put a date when it expires. And if they don't use it, it wasn't important then. You know, you snooze, you lose. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. On the bill? Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I also rise in support of this bill. I think it's important to be fiscally responsible with regards to how we spend public money. And any one of us, on any given day, can introduce a bill and offer a tax credit as a source of funding rather than dealing with a direct appropriation and a budget because certainly some of these things that do get tax credits, while they're important, I think we know don't fall into the top priorities of education, health care, and public safety. And so I think it's important that we recognize the timelines for these tax credits. If they don't take advantage of it in that time that's put aside for that tax credit, then rightly so, it should expire. That will give an incentive to an individual and organization that does receive a tax credit to ensure that they properly execute it. And then also, more importantly, we need to be fiscally responsible because tax credits are not for free. And while they're nice, you're essentially giving, in most cases, a business an opportunity to say, well, instead of spending my money and directly paying taxes to the government of Guam, I want to support this particular project or that particular event, or whatever the case may be. And then the key priorities of government are not addressed because the money never gets into the account to be able to spend it on other critical needs of our community. So certainly, I think it allows a process of accountability, which at the end of the day, I think we all agree. I think more of our people, as time goes on, want to know how their money is being spent and is it being spent responsibly? And when these opportunities are given, then those that have it, you know, will have the sense of responsibility and urgency to implement it if it's a particular project or construction that's part of that. Then we'd like to see them do that in a timely fashion and also be fiscally responsible, which I think at the end of the day is a responsibility we should all ensure happens. So with that, thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I certainly rise in support of this bill.
Thank you, Senator Brown. On the bill? If there's no one else on the bill, then the sponsor may close.
Sijus Massey, Madam Speaker. You know, I just wanted to share with my colleagues, moving forward, as I mentioned, you know, from 2014 to current, that the tax credit programs that we have passed by this body, there is a section that is now added to it. And if they don't give a, let me give you an example, actually, which will be 777601B. Any unused, this is, by the way, for Tieteng Jim, 77601B, any unused credit not used in the current tax period may be carryover into subsequent tax periods until such credits are exhausted. And then Section 77604A, the total amount of credits shall not exceed over a 10-year period. Illes la Turanguahan may, in their discretion, extend the eligible period until such time that all eligible tax credits are exhausted. This is the language that is now put in to all these programs that we put forward. It was mentioned earlier about the Harmon Industrial Park, a very successful tax credit program. I made sure that this one, too, as well, Madam Speaker, that there's any leftover or balance on that, whether they're going to use it. And GIDA told me they did speak to them and said they will not be using the remaining. Other ones, UOG, FIBA, has a sunset provision in it. Southern High School Auditorium has a sunset provision, which is, I believe this one has a two-year period. The UOG, FIBA, is a two-year sunset provision. The Guam Memorial Hospital has a five-year period. The Guam Tennis, National Tennis, has a two-year period. And one that we have, too, as well, in the 36 Guam Legislature, in Guam National Football Federation also has a sunset provision for a five-year period. So I thank my colleagues for the debate on this measure and the questions. I hope I answered them to my best of my ability. And I humbly ask my colleagues for their vote to support Bill 18-37 to spawn new incentives for economic growth by letting potential investors and worthy business organizations know that this is a viable program, one that has helped others achieve success. With that, Madam Speaker, I ask to place Bill 18-37 in the third reading file. Sijus Massey.
Sijus Massey, on the motion to place Bill number 18-37COR into the third reading file,
On the motion to place Bill number 18-37 COR into the third reading file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Madam Speaker, if I may, can I make a motion for reconsideration? I failed to include my good colleagues, who had great questions, and I'm sure they would want to be a part of this bill as a cosponsor.
On the motion to reconsider the vote to place Bill 18 on the third reading, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, we will reconsider. We are back on Bill number 18. Senator Taitukui, you are recognized. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on Bill number 18? If not, then the sponsor may close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to append the testimony of GIDEA that was dated April 10 to the committee report appended. I failed to, I did that on the 17th, but it needs to be included on Bill number 18 as well.
On the motion to append the testimony to the committee report of Bill number 18, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I also like to make one, a motion to include Senator Tom Fisher, Senator Dwayne Siniklis, Senator Joe Sinagastine, Senator Chris Barnett, and everyone else who's here, Madam Speaker, if you don't mind.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Madam Speaker, I ask that Bill 18-37 be sent to the third reading file.
On the motion to place Bill number 18-37 to the third reading file, again, any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. All right. Majority Leader, Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Sijous Masi, Madam Speaker. I move to resolve into the committee of the whole for the purpose of conducting the state funeral service for the late Honorable Benigno M. Palomo, former senator, and to allow the honored guests into the Speaker Antonio R. Pincot Legislative Session Hall and that it be conducted in its formal manner.
A motion was made to resolve into the committee of the whole for the purpose of conducting the state funeral service for the late Honorable Benigno M. Palomo, former senator, and to allow the honored guests into the Speaker Antonio R. Pincot Legislative Session Hall and that it be conducted in its formal manner. On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Sijous Masi, Madam Speaker. I move to recess until 10:00 a.m. Wednesday, April 26.
There's a motion to recess until 10:00 a.m. on Wednesday, April 26, 2023. That is the time that the state funeral begins. So if we're going to recess until that time, I would ask that you all be here prior. Is there any objection to the motion to recess until 10 for the state funeral on Wednesday, April 26? Any objection? Seeing no objection, we are recessed until 10:00 a.m., April 26. Please be early. Thank you.